When my dad came to visit us in Alaska, way back. I got sent to Salt Lake City because of the storm, because of a day on for three days.
Who figured?
I had this flight.
Oh, they're all freaking out.
Most people, it was a Ritz hotel, most people were in that building. He said, "I'm never, I'm never gonna see you again."
I didn't know.
No, I don't mind the flying, I don't mind vacations. You're standing to get on there.
No deal, you stand alone for a long time.
I just, that's why I got the TSA pre-checkout. Just to do it out in front of the hall. I'm gonna do the, if I ever fly again, I'm gonna get, I like it.
I haven't done this before.
Been so much work. If you have an American Express card, you're gonna be free. Constantly, my daughter, five years, such same for me. I'm just worried if this is gonna require, I'm worried my, what John did, to find ways to move back from a second place. Inefficient way.
Okay, at six thirty, we'll call the meeting to order with roll call. Marge, here, Mark.
Here.
Marvin.
I'm over here.
We're missing Dave Swenson and Austin, David O'Connell.
Here.
And Becky, here. Please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving into 1.4, approval of the agenda.
So.
Motion by Mark, second by Marge, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 2.1, recognition of visitors to the board meeting. Lake Park Ottoman Schools welcome you, welcome you to the meeting of the LPA Board of Education. While this is a meeting of the board to conduct the business of the school district, the board is not statutorily compelled to hear comments. We also desire to provide an opportunity to hear from members of the public, including staff and students on matters of interest. This portion of the agenda will be limited to a total of not more than thirty minutes unless otherwise determined by the board. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to not more than three minutes. The board requests that all comments be in keeping with and contribute to an atmosphere of civil, courteous, thoughtful, and respectful public discourse. Board members and administration will not respond to comments at the meeting. Appropriate responses will be provided at a later time. Our comments may lead to future board agenda items. Thank you for attending. Anyone have any comments tonight? Great. Moving on then to board reports. 3.1, transportation committee report. Marvin, you wanna take that?
I'd love to.
Rewind, it was less than a week.
It's been a day. So. We have bus, bus, bus issues. What are we, what are we looking at?
Well, and we have a couple items further down, so we're looking at two things. A current lease agreement. A surcharge has been added to that by Bluebird. The company won't set that up. I spoke with attorneys, our attorneys upon the matter, and they say it would cost more to challenge it than it's worth. I also did call and found out that the lease agreement has not been completely approved by the bank yet, so we're not obligated. Also, we are nine running buses and no spares at this time. So again, there's an agenda item further down the list. I'm looking at purchasing a couple of used buses that we can set aside as spares and also have an interesting opportunity for another lease agreement. That came up actually today.
Okay, there's some agenda items further down, but is there any questions? Hearing done, 3.2, policy committee. Who's taken it, Mark or Marge?
We went through the thresholds and looked at the numbers there. And we basically said that would work for superintendent. And we had a good discussion on it, because there's, you know, many issues that might come up for it, but I think it's a good fix. So hopefully we will agree on that one tonight. And then the other one?
Exit interviews.
Oh yeah, the exit interviews. They're going to continue, even though maybe some people think that maybe they should, but it's probably a very good idea to continue, especially to let the board know what exactly happened or why the person left. So just those two issues.
Any questions from Mark or Marge? And those, both of those policies are in your agenda, so hopefully everybody was able to review those. Questions? Okay, we'll move on to elementary principal, Mr. Byer.
Yeah, so staffing obviously is a big thing over the summer. Just read in the Star Tribune before coming here, Minnesota moved into the lowest unemployment rate in the nation, which is the lowest unemployment rate ever in the United States. So that makes sense, so I can't find even the custodians and a couple other pieces, but we're lucky just because a lot of people have come in on board. It's more of their pride in LPA and keep our school. So our, we have some long-term substitute in Jane Van Hammermatte and Robert Chatham. Both retired teachers from the region that are coming back with thirty-plus years of experience to help us out, fill some leaves. We have win interviews tomorrow. Just got a call today as someone else had accepted a position. So that's kinda, I mean, the trend of the summer, it, less numbers of applicants compared to in the past, but we're still having really quality ones. So we're lucky there, we just have to work a little bit harder to kind of get through and improve. But we still have another interview tomorrow and then two other leads. So I feel good about still filling our three open positions with quality candidates there as well. And then this week, sit down with special education teachers and we'll make kind of minute-per-minute schedules for peer professionals. We've had a couple resign as you've seen and others that are pursuing some other internal positions. So it's likely that we'll need to fill some of those, but we'll wait to do any hiring or posting until we know what the exact schedules would be on there, so we can just justify the hires. But just know that that's likely coming. Now, we've had some people reach out with interest in joining our school as peer professional, so I feel good about hiring that as well. Made some handbook changes. Some of them are important, like formatting and fonts, but ended up taking longer than it should have. The bigger ones are hats, just that students will just be uncommon, being dress-up kids that love hats. There's some unique admin permissions. If we have a student maybe going through Kimo or different things, made some way to go room this week and still use common sense, but for the most part, hats won't be a common thing throughout the school day. And then cell phones, which might be something to hear about at the board. They'll probably have a little bit of a learning curve from parents and students. But we won't, cell phones will get turned in to teachers. In the past, it's like you could leave it in your locker or your backpack, but then it still ended up at recess or we were Snapchatting in the bathrooms. They're just, you know, as a parent, things we couldn't quite control that their students shouldn't be exposed to. So they're just gonna turn them in to teachers at the start of the school day and then get them at the end. They'll be in some form like a pocket chart or binder, so a little bit less of a power struggle. They can go put them up in their little pocket as long as they're complying with that. No one even necessarily touches their cellphone, but it stays in there for the date when they get it at the end. The first offense was do a minor behavior step just to make sure parents, that's just a form of communication, not a huge consequence. We want to make sure parents are aware that it's an issue with their student refusing to turn in. Then the second one and on, they'll just be at the school office for the parents to pick up as, as they're able to. So I'm sure we'll have a little bit of pushback because of that inconvenience of having to pick it up, but I think it's worth the trade-off for just that more positive environment for our students. And then just a couple small things, just kind of reviewed some regional handbooks just to see if we're missing anything. And added some statements of employee qualification, like all of ours go through background checks. Just highlighting our practices, so parents and that know, just kind of get credit for that. And then clarified the right of searches, as is something that came up. So parents are know ahead of time that if your student brings something in a backpack or other things that impact the learning environment or safety, we do have a right to search backpacks or the person in that in school too. So those are the main ones, those are, and then staff and the summary one are pretty, pretty much the same with small tweaks. And then our PBS, our elementary PBS, for the sixth year in the world row is now sustaining exemplar school. So it's a top school in the state of Minnesota. Part of that is going through reflections and how we can improve as a staff. Having like community members on our committee would be one. And other products that we have for our students. So a great designation for them and a strong reputation that we want to keep going. So shout out to our elementary PBS committee.
I think that's a good move with the cell phones, because I just heard on the radio today, there's some new app out there called Like See or something like that, that doesn't have the age filter on it. So the, they wanted to get it out there to people, let them know that your younger kids may be exposed to some things. You don't want them to be exposed on that new app.
You're just kind of talking about internally, like, I mean, there's still, like, if a teacher is doing a project where it makes sense, I get like the cell phone's one of the most transformative pieces of technology. If we're using it for learning, then we'll have that. But ninety-nine percent of the time, that only brought negative aspects to our school.
So they won't have access to it out there?
No, they won't have access. Part of that too, that came up, just kind of for background or context, if you get asked about it, it became a big issue, like a student would get in trouble at recess and they would text mom or dad, "I'm being picked on." It wasn't, you know, the full context. Parents would come into the office, like yelling at Barb, yelling at me, upset no one did anything about it. And it's like, we're the only people here that don't know about it because you just had a text with your son or daughter. And it kind of just kept us out of loop and then you can't fix secrets and that. And sometimes it got their student who maybe started the conflict at recess, got to go home with mom or dad for the day, and then we never got to follow up and help make things better too. So it helps in keeping like Barb in the loop. You know, there'd be changes of transportation and that, and a parent texts their fourth grader thinking that that was adequate, but then the school doesn't know what's happening. A student's walking outside because dad or mom texts up there in the parking lot, but they didn't check out through the office. And there's some other safety pieces that went through that, so.
I think the best part about having this process outlined in the handbook is that, number one, not always, but often, cell phones are used inappropriately and during inappropriate times. So it being a rule, school-wide, takes the onus off the teacher to have that power struggle in the classroom. The rule is no cell phones, you can appear. That way the teacher doesn't have to fight constantly with students, they can continue with instruction. I think it's a good process.
And then remind has helped to that too. So parents bringing up or community members, our remind messaging is really, Barb has jumped out. I mean, that's just a school-wide piece, a really easy way, like, just as easy as texting for parents. So they can still communicate needs or schedule changes right through the classroom teacher if it's the end of the day quick, just to make sure there's an adult.
So you can, the parents can contact the front office.
Yeah, yep. And then all classroom teachers use remind as well, so they'll have multiple forms, but.
I'm sure that'd be a question, it's like, "How do I get a hold of my kid?" So.
Hopefully, yes.
You're too kind of good.
Yeah. There's some conversations, like, "I don't want your kid in the middle of that." Like, "You should be mad at your kid, you could text them."
Didn't have cell phones when I was a kid.
There was a time we didn't have to have them.
And I didn't want the school contacting my kids.
Exactly.
Any other questions for Mr. Byer?
Is, is Jane taking the kindergarten?
Yep.
Okay, all right, good.
She decided the best time at kindergarten is fall, winter, and spring. So she was good with any, of former kindergarten students.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, moving on then to Mr. Meyer.
I'd like to start with welcoming Mr. Ben Hennes. He's hit the ground running. He's been a great asset already. It's nice that he has that experience as a principal already and he has ideals. So he's been sheer between Craig and I already. And just, I'm not as hard in the handbook as Craig is, so we are, Ben and I are still working on different things from the cell phone to we finally hired all of our staffs. We go back to the master schedule for the fifth time. So we're gonna finally finish that up and just building interventions into our schedule. So at our work session meeting in August, I'll bring our updated handbook changes that we're gonna present. Like mentioned, we did hire a last, staff member last week. So we hired a science teacher, Jeremiah Johnson. He's a Moritz State graduate. He's subbed in the Moritz School District for five years. He's gonna be teaching science. Our teacher, Hannah Muller, she is also a Dragon. Moritz State just graduated. Actually, her graduation date is today. She had to do some summer school, but she's very excited to be here. Fax teacher is McKenna Anderson, also a Dragon. She's from Nebraska, but she's got a lot of energy that she's gonna bring to our fax department. And then we were able to find a industrial tech teacher slash AIGE teacher, Jim Joyce. He taught with me for twenty-some years in Martho. He taught in the North Flotside for fifteen years, so he's got, actually eighteen years. So he's got thirty-eight years of experience in this area. So he's excited to work with their different areas and just get them, offer some different classes with, he's gonna offer motors, small motors class, small engine, and then just offer some different things that is more up his alley with the, with the AIGE program and kind of get that initiated into there. And also, we hired a peer professional, Melissa Went from Holly, and she's coming here with some experience. So we're finally fully staffed. So she already punched in a number, sent out a mass email to our students on some changes that we have coming up to the pipeline. One would be work-based learning. And within an hour, she already had eighteen students reply, juniors and seniors, that want to take that class already. So it's almost like our middle class where we have fifty students that want to take it and we have one class right now, so we're adapting. So, because some exciting things happening that we have to put together. So the goal is being done in April and will be done in August, but the whole process. Outcoming events, Mr. Schultz is gonna be here soon, but we're gonna have our fall coaches meeting on August eighth. He's gonna go over handbook and LPA expectations. The following Monday is the fifteenth, where it's where we have our, our fall sports will be in. And then our new teacher in service will be August twenty-fifth, starting out with a meet and greet. And we're just gonna kind of go over, we have some new things for our new staff to make them invited with a backdrop and almost like a press conference and just kind of make them feel excited to be here at LPA. And at our August meeting, I'm gonna let Ben kind of explain, he's gonna lead our mentorship program and lead it from a one-year program to a second year, that way our teachers here. But there's certain things that are being covered in year one, your first year teaching versus year two, which is going to be more of a book study and provide them support. And our back-to-school night will be August thirty-first. Last spring, we did not have a chance to have the sixth graders come over for orientation, so we're gonna have that for the seventh graders, so two different sessions. Get them their Chromebooks and get them a tour, meet their teachers. But also, it's open for A through twelve graders. And just say they can go, they know what the school, they're returning students. The only thing different, we're not gonna hand out devices until the first day of school. Last year, both students and parent weren't there at the same time, so there was a lot of miscommunication. So we're just gonna hand out devices the first week of school. And our enrollment numbers are, have stayed steady since last board meeting.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Meyer?
See, or no, with Ben starting this job and maybe redoing some of the policies, some of the handbook, is he going to present that in front of the students and parents or just students?
Right now, I know the first week of school, we're gonna go over it with students. We may require where students and parents also signed the handbook that they've read it.
Okay.
Will they read it? I'm not sure. Sometimes they, sometimes they sign it, but that's still all right now is definitely students. We're gonna go over it probably a couple times, just on the different changes.
So they'll understand the consequences and et cetera, okay.
We're not on a visual, on one sheet of paper, that has everything on one, instead of reading ten pages of documents. So it's more of a color version. If you do this, you get level one, sort of like different levels. And I'll present that at the August meeting.
Yeah, it's a consequence matrix for, yeah.
Pardon?
A consequence matrix for, if you do this, these are the possible consequences.
That's a good idea, make sure that the parents read it too.
Probably, I'm gonna send it out my newsletter. So it's one way, we'll probably get it out to them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on then to 4.3, business manager.
All right, so the board agenda, or the board report is here for you. I just wanted to give a couple highlights of what's been going on in the office this very busy month. Is that Brady Marks' contract is complete, so we are flying so low in there right now. We're still closing out fiscal year twenty-two, bills for June are coming in and they're getting, you know, appropriated to the right year. Our audit date is set for September nineteenth, so I have a long time to get ready for that, but I am starting to gather documents for the auditors now. Just like Craig said, we're in hiring season. That's a lot of work for us in the business office as well, getting everyone signed up, getting everyone organized. And then I will be attending Levy Systems Training through the MDE on the twenty-seventh, just to try to continue my, my learning in this fun world of school finance. It did change the, the board packages a little bit. The, the big long reports, at least ahead, historically provided, we put those in the consent agenda. So if you want to look at individual checks, that's where those will be. As far as documents in this report, I have on page two, the expense summary for through the end of June. If, come to the next page. Thank you. Summarizing where we are year-to-date. I would, I just want to point out, it looks like, well, revenues were ahead and we're also ahead on spending. So on the year-to-date, you see a lot of year-to-dates that are over a hundred percent. This also includes S or dollars, which weren't in the budget. And I'm working on trying to get that pulled out. So hopefully by the next board meeting, I can bring that out and we can see where we are year-to-date in more of a true sense. And then. And then page two, we have our funds. Lisa always gave you guys the breakdown of what we've spent. So this is what we've spent in June, payroll versus bills and expenses by fund. As you can see, we have most of our dollars going to salaries. Something new, I've added where we're at right now with all of our grants. So right now, we have about a million dollars budgeted for the last fiscal year in grants. We only have two-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars yet to spend and we have the next year to spend that money. So I think we're doing really well using our grant dollars up and getting them out the door. And then a few comparisons to the previous year and the previous month. So right now, we're about a million dollars over for our cash funds. Levy payments are due, well, the levy payments went out today, so that's gonna change real quick. But you can see where we're at for comparisons last year over this year. If you have any questions, okay.
Any questions?
Looks pretty, I like the color.
Yeah, I thought it had a greater color.
Okay, moving on, 4.4, superintendent.
So some of this has been spoken about before. I talked about the work-based learning, we met with Troy Haglen. New business teacher will be taking on that role. We capped it this first year at ten students in the work-based learning program. This is outside with Ms. Recrum, already does. So it's adding to it, but we don't have to her workload, so that's why new business teacher, we're doing it. So we capped it at ten, we didn't want to overtask a new business teacher, but we had eighteen kids already. And I believe it was just put out today. So I see that growing. So we'll make maybe adjustments after first semester and see what we can do. We chatted about some strategies for that. Little place with local businesses, juniors and seniors, so I think, I think it's going to be ahead. High school landscaping, I want to give a big shout-out to Melissa Mattson. She's been volunteering all this work we see out here in the high school. She's been doing that on a voluntary basis. We took money from LTFM, gave her a small working budget this year, which she didn't have before. And she's done amazing jobs. So if you see anything out there that's been redone, new, new dirt, it's because of her and, and her husband and daughter.
Oh, fantastic.
She's made out. So if you see her in the community, please give her a big thank you for doing that. This is saving a lot of her time. Recently, we had another financial audit by S and P Global just to recalculate our financial rating. If you remember, we had done it before with a different company, before we went to, went to bonds, bond sales. S and P looked at our financial rating, looked at that, well, how we've been strategically paying off that overage and how we have a longer forecast. And they actually increased this from an A to an A-plus rating due to this stability we've had over the year. Again, I, I need to give a shout-out to Dr. Henry because she got the ball rolling on that. I don't think we'd be where we are right now without her. John and I have been putting our heads together daily, if not every two days, and looking how we can continue that trend. So that's looking good. And then again, there's back-to-school workshops, our new teacher on the twenty-fifth. We're gonna do things a little different. We are going to make sure that anybody coming to this district and anybody currently in the district knows that we love them and we're gonna keep them and we're gonna make them feel valued and treasured. We're gonna do things differently for them. This year, our first day with staff is going to be different as well. We're gonna do a staff retreat out at Eats Side of Lake Resort. We want to get away from the building, we don't want them to feel like they're coming back to the rat race, which isn't really what school's all about. But we want them to come back and feel, again, part of a team and valued as a family. So we're gonna be doing a morning of team building out there and then an afternoon of training with Cultivate Twenty-One. Becker County Museum Summer Camps for our Dade Camp students began last week with art. I got to watch that a few times, it was interesting, but kids are having a good time. This week, they're working on robotics, or working on coding, if you see the trailer out there. And then next week's robotics, and something different for them, a little bit more organized instructional camp. So it looks like they're having a really good time. Then again, August twenty-third, our school board retreat, five PM, location to be determined. I'm still working on that because I'm trying to get us in Hub Forty-One, but they may be booked through September. But there's other locations, so I'll have a place within, in the next couple days. And I'll notify the board by email for most, texting for some. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Dr. Godfrey? Okay, moving on, technology director, doesn't look like we have anything. John, do you have anything to add?
I'm sorry, I just loaded it.
Oh. You just loaded it?
Yep.
It's a good, if you refresh, it'll come back up.
That was my fault.
Updates are pretty standard, isn't it? Regular monthly stuff, like basic summer and whatnot. So we are still waiting on a decision from our ECF applications. Hopefully we get that money support or that promo refresh, otherwise they'll just come out with a budget again. Which it has been budgeted for, it'd be kind of nice to have a little abstract here and there. Also included with this month, I kind of solidified the outline. That's where you get pretty good elementary school project. Our surveillance and security plan for the next couple of years here. And actually, it started about this time last year when we started updating the access for the high school and the existing system and then kind of added a few extra doors and whatnot. The system that we ended up going with is a vigil on access system. And then, you know, they're worried about this type next year, we'll be able to add their surveillance and some other camera system which integrates together. So a little bit better ecosystem to be in rather than having separate systems to deal with. This way, we can go kind of one-stop to be able to get visibility on the building, schedule things for events, then helping also building use and whatnot, and then also for lockdown and just general security. So it's gonna allow us a lot more clarity and flexibility district-wide. Be able to, because the two buildings are connected network-wise, we can save some money. Instead of having to buy appliances for the whole building, we can kind of dump them in some areas. So we're not having to buy, yes, set for each building or multiple sets for each building. We can kind of pay back on the back of the existing stuff and save some money there, so. Future state's gonna be kind of slanky, right now we're getting there. We've added a couple monitors at the front desk to the high school for some visibility for some of the perimeter doors. Obviously, the front door is being monitored, but we've had some issues with the west door and a few of the other doors too. So we've got cameras on those doors already, but we're getting So we've got cameras on those doors already, but we've got those in front of, uh, the front desk as well. So we get some actual eyes monitoring of those situations too. Any questions or any concerns about that, let me know. Also included as, uh, just an outline of vigilance, um, kinda help our educational ecosystem, plus a couple of key studies towards other public schools around the country, so. Just what Dave, uh, did with some case studies where they actually were able to help reduce bullying and vandalism and a few other things too. It should help, help us get some, uh, more security and, and we're controlling the buildings.
Questions? Comments? Okay, we'll move on then, uh, transportation and facilities. Do we have anything about? Food service, nothing. Activities director?
No, we just kinda go over, um, what he's got on here. The Philmanus has begun. Uh, we did approve that quote we had. I know that it has been gone up a little bit because of change of product prices. Also, Mr. Prendle has been working himself on our irrigation system on the field and he's found, or several lake securities, been working to patch that, going through it. Um, see future projects. Hopefully, we have a ticket booth before the first rainstorm with football game, or I won't be taking tickets on that game like last year with Sean. Concrete slab. We're talking about changing the way our entrances, moving our, uh, our concession stand, a bunch of things. I talked with Sheri today about bleachers. So I think there's gonna be some nice improvements coming in the future. Summer rec programs are off to a good start. I think everybody is having a good time. Also, uh, thanks, shout-out to coaches, to Landon and Cassie for co-directing this year. Um, they've really taken a lot of, lot of the brunt of the pressure of getting that going. I think they've done a great job. So coaching openings. And there's the fall sport schedule, which is coming up pretty quick.
What is cold paper doing to the gym floors?
Say that again.
Sanding, sanding.
They're sanding the floors. Cold paper?
Sell a lot of the waxes and whatnot too, so it'll also come in and sand and apply.
Wax on, wax off.
Yep.
That's pretty much the main safer for gym floors.
Yeah, we did the main wood, so yeah, they're just taking a layer of wax off, a layer of wax.
They just revarnish every year. Do that for three consecutive years.
Any questions for the activities director report? Okay, we'll move on to then to the consent agenda, which includes five-point-one, consider approval of payment of I S D two-eight-eight-nine bills, claims and the district financial report. Five-point-two resignations and retirements. Five-point-three, consider approval of minutes. Five-point-four, consider approval of treasurer's report. And five-point-five, approval of contracts.
Before, uh, the board votes on the consent agenda, I just wanna make mention of one of the contracts in there for Jim Joyce. We, um, had done a different negotiation with him. That's been approved by the E A. Um, he will be under a one-year contract with an extra year of single health coverage. Again, I went through our E A president. She spoke with E A members and they agreed to this situation.
Wondering about that.
I was wondering about that.
Yeah.
Do we have motion?
So moved.
Motion by Dave. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Marv. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Six-point-one donations, nothing to report for July. Just like seven, no old business. Moving on then to new business, eight-point-one building construction update. And I see Colin is here.
Colin, do you wanna come up here?
Hi.
I'll go ahead and stop Sheri. You can take over.
Uh, you want me maybe by the screen or back here?
Up to you, whatever works good for you.
That works.
Okay, so, uh, good evening. Colin Raybine with I C S. Gonna go through, today we've got, um, our C D drawings, which is our construction, uh, documents. So, uh, last time I was here, we went through, I think I was here for maybe D Ds? They don't, I came here for fifty percent C Ds, but we did a fifty percent C D, just checking on markets and, uh, making sure we're where we needed to be with our documents. So, um, just a quick recap, um, our design phase. So we had S Ds, our schematic design, D Ds, design development. And now C Ds, which are the construction documents. These are the documents that we will send out to bid. Um, so at each of those phases, I C S, uh, puts together an estimate and, and shows that back in our budget. Then we make adjustments, uh, based on where our estimate is sitting, uh, for the next phase of doc, of the document. So did a couple of extra, uh, checks during C B's this time around, which is not uncommon. Um, but typically, we do it more when we have some uncertainties in the market. Uh, so making sure that our numbers are as reflective as we can be of the market, so. Like I said, these are the documents that will go out to bid. And I've got here today, I've got the high school and the elementary school. Our goal is to get these out on the street and take bids back on the eleventh for the high school and on the eighteenth for the elementary school. Um, and so the, they are bid separately. Uh, they're separate projects. The high school will be a single prime contractor. So it'd be much like a general contractor that'll hold all of the other subcontracts. So just because of the value of the project, it's not a large project. Um, and some of the smaller scopes of work, um, not as lucrative to other contractors. So a general contractor can pick up other contractors and, um, go in with them and make sure that it's a, a, a big enough project for them to take the time to do it. So, uh, the high school will just be one contract that would, uh, get executed. And then the elementary school is, there's a total of seventeen work scopes. Um, so two, if you remember, we bid out the steel labor and material. Uh, those are two separate contracts and then there are fifteen additional ones that would be going out for bid now. So that would be the balance of the project. And like I said, we'll go out to bid, uh, with, uh, with everything going well tonight, go out tomorrow. And then, like I said, take bids back on the eleventh and the eighteenth. So, any questions on that side of things?
Over the dates, yeah.
The eleventh of August for the high school and the eighteenth of August for the elementary school.
Those bids are for?
Say that again.
Everything?
Yes, yep, the entirety of the project, of both projects.
How long is, and they go out, they, they have, they go out then? How long do they have to?
So there, I will, I will go, we'll issue them for bid tomorrow and they would, we would take bids back on the eleventh and on the eighteenth, is when we'd take bids back.
Right, so that they got from tomorrow till?
Yep, correct.
How's the market looking for all the materials and stuff? Has it improved at all?
So I wouldn't say it has improved necessarily, which I don't see it, um, really in the future improving. Uh, it's started to taper and it, it should eventually here plateau. I don't know when that's gonna be, but it is, you know, everything that we see is, it's getting to that point where we haven't seen big increases as of late. Uh, we've seen some small ones, but as far as the big components of, of, uh, the project, the steels, the coppers, uh, plastic, stuff like that, haven't seen any big swings in those numbers, so they've kind of leveled out. But as far as our, our glass ball is right now, it, it's about as level as we think it's probably gonna be for a while.
Stable is better than gaining.
Yeah, right. And so, and, and again, that could,
Could change.
Could change whenever. Um, but yeah, right now, it's, it's looking like it's, it's somewhat stabilizing. Um, the benefit of going out right now too, I'll just kinda touch on that. Uh, so typically, we con, we try and hit that end of summer, uh, when people are starting to look for that work, work for next year. We're a little bit early, uh, but that's just because there's ex, there's actually a lot of projects that are going out for bid this fall. And so the goal was to try and get in front of those and be one of the first projects of the fall to get out. Um, sometimes you end up seeing some better numbers because they don't have a good pulse of the market yet and they don't know where numbers are quite landing. So some contractors will get pretty aggressive just to line up work. Uh, we see that a lot, especially when we have fluctuations in markets where they wanna keep their guys busy. Um, if they know they can hit their material prices, they'll go decently aggressive, um, just to make sure that they can keep their guys employed. So, uh, as far as going out right now, we're, we're at a good time. If numbers, uh, did not come back favorable, we also left enough time that we could come back to market. Um, we could reject all the bids and just come back to market, uh, maybe tweak some things in our design. See where numbers came back high. If they do come back high, make adjustments, try and get it back out on the street as soon as we can, to receive new bids. That way we could hopefully still award, so.
Are these, so if I'm looking right, like, if you're going out tomorrow for bid, what, that's about a two-week window?
Um, it's, yeah, so it's, it is, yeah, whatever till the eleventh of August and then.
That's the elementary, they may have a little longer for the high school, is that?
Uh, vice versa. Vice versa, yeah, a little bit longer for the elementary school.
Little over two, two, little over two weeks for the high school, little over three weeks for the elementary school. Do you think legally it's two weeks, right?
Fourteen days.
Would it be beneficial to push that high school out another week just to give?
Um, we could, so the, the reason I wanted to stagger them is I don't want to, if there's a contractor that's looking to go after both projects, I don't want him, them to not get the element, or if they didn't get the elementary school, well, now I don't wanna go after the high school because it's too small for me to care about type of a situation. So I'd like to, I'd like contractors to come after the high school and then it's really one of those projects that if I get it great, it's not one I'm really after. I'm after the elementary school, so I'm gonna go after this one just because hopefully I'll already be here with a nice piece of work, pick up both. Um, if we did that, I would wanna push them both consecutively another week, so that way we still, like, you know, I did push the high school to have longer, I would push them on. Um, there really isn't, it, it's not a very large project. Um, there's a couple of pieces of it that are costly. So, uh, that's what drives the number, but the overall scope of the project is pretty basic. And the, the contractors that would bid on it would have plenty of time to get those numbers together. Uh, we don't have a whole lot of air handling units or something like that that would, uh, that would take time for manufacturers to get back. So there's, the only benefit of pushing it out is when we have those materials that are gonna take time to get pricing back on. We really don't have that for the high school, uh, so doing it in a, in a short period of time was, was acceptable.
And Colin, tonight, you're looking for approval of the construction documents.
Correct, yep. Yeah, approval to go out for bid. Again, we're not, we're not, um, set for anything. It's just to go get bids. Once we get the bids, we'll come back and then we would award each contract individually. So, uh, like I said, the elementary school, there's a fifteen, fifteen more work scopes that we would approve and then write contracts. If, say, one of those don't come back favorably, we could, send that back out for rebid. Um, if five of them don't come back favorably, we could reject five of them, go back out for rebid. Hopefully, they all come in nicely. We can award them all. Uh, but we'll come back to this, to this, uh, to a meeting before we approve any of those. So going out for bid is really, it's just getting us out there. Um, it doesn't commit us to anything yet. Run through documents.
Uh, maybe a?
I'll try and.
Quick run-through?
What's that?
Yeah, maybe a quick run-through.
Yeah, I'll go through quickly. I'll try and be as elaborate as I can. I see these about every day, so I might skip over them. So if there's something that you guys wanna see or really wanna look at or have questions on, stop me at any time. Uh, otherwise, I'm gonna go through the high school documents and then I'll jump into the elementary school. Elementary, elementary school, I have obviously more documents in there. Some of them aren't, yes, beneficial, but there's some in there that, uh, maybe you wanna see. So, uh, just starting out here, what I did is I just cherry-picked, uh, a number of doc, of drawings from the overall set for you guys to see. Uh, the total set, there's, uh, the two-hundred drawings in the elementary school and there's close to a hundred for the high school. So didn't wanna go through all of them, but I picked ones that, uh, I figured you guys would wanna see. We did a similar thing at POC where we, um, gathered a group of, of drawings that were beneficial to the group. So we're not all looking at, uh, detailed mechanical drawings that don't make any sense to any of us. But if there is something that you wanna see, let me know. So high school here, the first drawing I have up is the agricultural and the construction space. Um, both these spaces here, this is a demo drawing, showing the areas that we're demoing. So we've got some floor cutting, uh, for electrical coming into these rooms. And really just showing mainly finishes that are getting demoed out of there, um, on the electrical drawings. It shows the lights coming out of there. Couple of openings that get cut in, um, which in the next drawing, you'll see where our addition goes here, uh, finishing out that square of the building. Next drawing is a demo drawing for this space up here. So actually, this is the media center here. Um, showing new carpet in here, couple of openings going in this back wall for windows that go in here. And then these spaces out here in the corridor, uh, turning these into flex learning spaces, moving those lockers out of there, putting them along the wall. Just showing demo. The next drawing is an overall new construction plan. Zoom in on it a little bit here. So showing this new space. We've got this addition here, uh, really not a whole lot going on with the agriculture room except for, uh, some of the tables in there, staff, tools room, and then a re-lay-out of that construction space. We'll see along here, we've got welding hoods along here, dust collection. I think there's a gas, uh, cylinders that are being stored in these kinda separate buildings over here, separate rooms over here. So here, this is the new construction, uh, for this space, so media center here, again, showing these windows that are going in here. Um, calling out some new finishes on here. Uh, this flex learning space, pretty much just showing that it's being opened up, having some market boards in there. And, uh, and a new screen on the wall. And then I don't get flexible furniture, um, from the furniture package. I guess here's just a large plan, the plan we looked at before. Showing a little more detail on some of this. So, um, one of the things, I guess I didn't touch on, this is all C M U and brick matching the exterior of the building. These spaces here, these'll have no ceilings in, so it'll be an exposed structure similar to what you have over here. Agriculture will have a, uh, ceiling in there, but that's an existing ce, ceiling.
Is there a door to go outside for the greenhouse?
Is that?
Is there a door to go outside?
So the greenhouse won't be attached to the building after all because the change in the, what the structure has to be. Because the peak of this roof is too low to have a lane-two style greenhouse, so the greenhouse will be an A-frame peak. So we're actually talking about connecting to the fabrication shop.
Yeah, so also due to the construction makeup of the greenhouse, we can't attach it to the building. So, uh, like Dr. Godfrey said, it'll be a, it has to be a standalone structure, so moving that up to the fabrication space. The other thing that we were in conflict with, with is this window over here. Um, oops, I tried to touch this. Uh, it's, it's a, it's a full height window and so the greenhouse would've came across that midway. So we had, early on, we had looked at, okay, we could cut a door in there. Um, do we get rid of the window up above or what do we do with that? So it really wasn't a great location either on the building. Uh, but that was before we found out it was a, a bigger code issue, which code went to allow us to do things.
It'll still be a four-season, it'll function as a four-season greenhouse. So it'll be the same, same size, same functionality, same automation. Um, we're even talking about how do we get heated floors in there, just so we know that we'll be able to use it here around.
It would've been nice to be, you could full light, you know?
Yes, yeah, it's, that, that would actually, not just that, but we could showcase it to anybody driving by. Unfortunately, because of the differences in structure, sizes, it just, it couldn't make it work.
Here, this is a few different drawings to see here. So this one's a finished drying. This is a. So this one's a finished drawing, this is over here, as you reflect the ceiling plans, what's it? These spaces here, just showing exposed structure that gets painted, existing agriculture ceiling. And then our finished plans here showing, all of this just pretty much gets sealed concrete in all these spaces. And then agriculture is remaining. A lot in terms of finishes that go on in there. We did look at some of these spaces doing actual finished floors, but given what's going on in those spaces, you damage them right away. So just want the sealed concrete in all of those. And it's a, it's not your typical just sealed concrete like you see on exterior. It's an actual product that's a surface applied sealer that goes on it. Keeps it nice. Finished drawing up here, just showing new carpet in these spaces, new carpet here, some media, some views of these lockers. So lockers running along here, moving out of these coves, lockers along here.
Are we still going to have the same number of lockers or are we going to change?
Uh, I think we actually went up, we increased to 400 lockers, is that where we're at?
I think so, yeah.
So I think there was three, 320 or something, 340 is what we had started out with, or what you had for existing?
It's 362.
362, and so we bumped up to 400.
Okay.
Here's just a plumbing drawing. Again, showing some of the hydraulic lines in here, domestic on the other side. At one time, we did talk about adding some sinks into these spaces or moving these sinks. Unfortunately, that all has in-floor heat around the perimeter, so doing anything with that posed too much of an issue. So a lot of that stuff got just left the way it is. Pushed us out of that space a little bit. Some new HVAC plants, all of our ventilation that goes. Not a whole lot different in this space other than where we have the, down here where our welding exhaust is moving to. Let's see. And then our wood vacuum, just re, refiguring this space so this works out better.
Colin, just as an aside, we have Jim's email.
He should.
Can you include him on our main documents?
Yeah.
Like he's, he's now taken over as our district building tech coordinator, senior director.
So first question I have on this one, so are you putting another EVAC system on the other side or are you going to tie into the one we already have?
So.
For the dust collector?
Dust collector, this just gets tied into this existing one here.
Right, okay.
Um, for the welding hood, this is a new.
So you're putting another one in then?
Yep, this moves over on the other end, right? Yep, and this is a new system in here.
Second question I have, have you figured out the fire code or fire detection code yet?
Yes.
Okay, what did we get for an answer?
So we have to have a new panel.
Are you serious?
Yes.
Is that, was that from OSHA or the state?
Uh, that comes from the state plan reviewer, so.
Well, I know, we had this conversation, I think it was you that I talked to.
Could have been.
So just a, can we, let's have a conversation outside of this for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's actually, it's a good topic and I'll just touch on it really quick because it did push our budget a little bit. This new space will require a new fire, fire alarm panel, which in the future will be, it's, it would, it would make this building available to have audio system. So when an alarm goes off, rather than just the horn and strop, you, you know, new code requires an audio message, you know, saying fire, whatever the, whatever the hazard is in that location. And so the new, new code requires us to have a new panel, which allows that, your old panel doesn't. It's a, it is a large cost to the project, but in the future, anytime you do any type of construction to this building, you have to accommodate the new code, so you already have that panel to do that. That was one thing that we could not get around, but it benefits the rest of the, the school for the future. And here's a, just an electrical lighting plan, just showing the new lights into the spaces, all the LED lights. And then a power plant, showing new outlets throughout the space, new space here, drop cords, cord reels above, cord reels above here. Adding those all over the place. That's kind of it. So that's kind of the high school.
So the media tech, we're just going to put some windows, new carpet.
New paint on the walls and yeah, that's about it.
Few, few pieces of flexible furnishing.
Yeah, furniture.
Any other questions on the high school before we move on?
Okay, then I'll jump into the elementary school, uh, I should say. So high school, that construction timeframe is for summer of '23, so summer of next year. We'd start when school is out, probably start a little bit earlier, just go, as soon as we can do footings and foundations out there, we'll do that. But then the bulk of the construction goes through summer, turn over at end of summer. So really no disruption at all to school. And then the elementary school is a phased approach, so it'll take us from really this fall all the way through till end of summer of '24. And so the way we have that laid out is first thing we do this fall is start on the footings and foundations for the addition. So get our footings and foundations in while we still have decent weather and then they start working on steel and enclosing the building through the winter. And so then once winter is done, then we will come back to do our exterior finishes. We'll hold off on doing exterior finishes till the end of the project, just to stay away from a lot of those winter construction costs. So the brick that's on the outside of the building, we will wait until we have better weather conditions to do that. But what we'll do in the meantime is get temporarily enclosed, so the windows, put poly over there, frame them in. And then we have heat in the building and can be working on the building on the inside. So start the addition, then when summer hits, we take over this portion of the building and work through the summer on that. By the end of summer, turn over these pieces and be focusing down over on tearing down this portion of the building and redoing this portion there. So at some point in time, this space through here will be the only occupied space. We do have to give up a number of classrooms down here, we've got planned for, we are a few short, which we have to get some, either we have to create some temporary space over here or we get some temporary classrooms brought in. So once these two are turned over, we move into here, taking over this space, do the, do the tear down, rebuild of that. That'll carry through pretty much, it won't be as, as long all the way through summer, but it'll be sometime in the summer, we'll be able to turn that one over. And then right at summer of '24, start of summer of '24, we'll remodel the remainder of this building. So just a way to shuffle around and make sure that we aren't occupying too much of the space. Some of these spaces, if it works out that we can get in here, maybe there's some pieces that we can tie into a little earlier. Or if we figure out, you know, hey, we need a different routing through here, we've got to push some stuff. A lot of that stuff can be flexible, but right now our phase plan is, I think, in pretty good shape for amount of construction during each phase two. So first drawing I've got here then is the civil portion of the project. So just showing here, and this will happen at the tail end of the project, so summer of '24 is when we'll take on most of the civil work. And only because we just got enough work going on that we want to utilize a lot of this lay down area. And then we don't want to wreck our, our new finishes over here. So relocating, I'll start from the bottom here, relocating this playground down, putting a new parking lot over here. Access with the sidewalk to come over here. One thing that we talked about is making sure we have a fence along the sidewalk so kids do come over. They're not inclined to run across the parking lot when they're coming over to their playground. New bus loop area here, so taking out this paving, replacing it, rerouting or reconstructing how this is, flows in here, making it larger for the bus parking, new sidewalks along here. This is new pavement for the, we've got pickleball courts, basketball courts in there, a new fence that goes around it. New playground area with playground equipment, sidewalk coming all the way up to the addition. Then up in this staff parking lot, resurfacing that, creating better drainage away from the building and then a sidewalk to tie them together. And then we also have, there's not, the town of Ottoman does not really have a whole lot of storm sewer availability. But we were able to tie in pretty much everything from here, send it out to the street here and most of this stuff runs this way. So we're able to work with what was there. Next drawing is an overall demo plan, so as you can see, we're touching just about everything in the project, in the school. There's a couple of rooms down here that just show as white, so that's pretty much floor. And that's because that area is getting abated right now, we left that off of the demo contractor scope of work for abating those floors. That's why you don't see the shading, does not mean that there's not construction going on in there. A lot of those, actually all of those rooms get touched. So with the exception of some boiler room work, the gyms and maybe a couple of rooms up here, pretty much everything has some type of extent of work to it. There's an overall new plan and I have, the next ones will be blown up areas, so you can see this a little further. But this is just an overall plan, so we're showing, this is the second story of our two-story here, so lower level, upper level. The new infill area existing down here, rest of this to be reconstructed, reutilizing spaces. So, well, it's kind of small here too, but I'll navigate my way through. So starting up here, ECFE spaces, all of this is pre-laid out, new space. Bathroom here, we were able, able to keep, we're not doing anything in that bathroom. Coming down through here, coming into the admin space, relaying out of these offices. Coming down, new raider lounge area next to the library. And then over down this way, EBD, L D classrooms over there. Again, the only thing we're really doing in these gyms are just the tie-in points, so we've got some flooring to do in there. We've got some alternates for some acoustical baffles that go up here, that gym does get quite noisy. The thing you won't see in here are the bleachers, so we did get quotes on the bleachers. You can, you can state contract those out, so we did not include them in the project. Mainly budget reasons, but they can be procured at any point in time. So when we get closer to the end of the project, if we have contingency funds or we have the funds available that we want to just procure them separately, we would do that at that time, so we did not include bleachers in the scope of work that's being built out. As you work your way down, we've got the back of house over here, the library, there wasn't a whole lot that we're doing in there. We've got a new window that gets cut in up there, but the media center itself, but stays pretty much what is there. Coming out over here, some gang bathrooms that are along this space next to the gym. Locker rooms, new lockers in there, reconfiguring the shower spaces so they're more user friendly. And then back of house, other than equipment being in there, there's not a whole lot going into the boiler and mechanical rooms. And you work your way down here, coming through this way, we have cafeteria space, kitchen space, very open. Some, replacing these windows down here. And then nothing going out this way, these entrances, not doing anything down there. So then moving, so cafeteria, kitchen was here, moving our way down, that's an existing way, this is the new infill area. So new science lab areas, moving into classroom space, classrooms coming around. This area is a flex learning space, so just an open concepted area for activities to be done out there. I think there's flexible furniture that's going on in each of these spaces too. Music, new bathrooms here. One thing you'll see here, the, in the existing building, we kind of changed levels in a few different places. So we dropped down, there's some stairs and a ramp, a ramp over here. This building is getting raised up, so this is all one level till we get all the way down here. That's where we have one ramp and one set of stairs now, so there's not multiple level changes. A little above the two-story addition here, so. Lower level, upper level, going through here, title rooms, classrooms, bathrooms here, elevator, stair tower, stair tower. Again, this area out here being a flex type learning space, a couple of reading areas in here. Move your way upstairs, classroom space, classroom space. Again, more flex learning here, this is a larger flex learning, some locker banks in here with learning space on top of them. Bathroom and then additional classrooms here. Roof plan, so what we've done with these, due to budgets, what we've moved to is pricing these all out as alternates. So you'll see these kind of five different roof areas. We're setting those as alternates within the bid, so when they bid on them, they'll, they'll bid an individual price for each of those roofs. So if everything goes favorably and we, our numbers are under, we can accept a number of these roof alternates. Otherwise, we will plan to pick them up as we go with either contingency funds as they're available or LTFM plan. So the, the spaces that you'll see getting done are obviously the new roof on this infill area, new roof on the two-story addition. And then there's just some work along each of these, that little space there that needs to be done to tie in each of those. Exterior elevations. Not a lot has changed since the last time we looked at them, other, other than some more details that you see. It's on a two-story, doesn't show up really well, but it's mainly brick here, metal panel as you go up towards the south. And the metal panel over on this space, brick here, this is that middle stair tower, if you recall from that drawing. So there's kind of stair tower here, stair tower on this end, this is all glass curtain wall here. So that's what you can kind of see there on this, which would be over here. This is looking from that south end, so this here, as I said, you see this curtain wall here, brick, metal panel. Some different contrasting, uh, construction types here that tie everything together nicely. This view is just looking, so if I'm standing in between the existing building and the new addition, this is looking at the existing building where we have this little chunk of infill brick along there that matches the existing brick. This is from the street view of that infill addition, so all of this brick below with windows and then metal panel up above. And then new windows in a lot of these existing openings, that was a request that we replace all the windows in there, so we've done that. The finished plan, so I'll go through these ones a little quicker. Main point is LVT at all of the corridors, pretty much all of. Main point is LVT at all of the corridors, pretty much all of the learning spaces or classroom spaces carpet. The flex areas, which are really an extension of the corridors are all LVT, so as far as maintenance goes. Everything in the corridors or in the, in the flex spaces is all going to be on a scrubber. And then you don't have to vacuum anything except for in the classrooms, so try to keep those separate. That's much the same for all these drawings, cafeteria is also LVT. Kitchen is a fluid applied epoxy, so are the locker rooms, it's not, it's not a quarry tile or anything like that. And then bathrooms are, wait, it's got height tile in all of the bathrooms. What we did, at one point in time, we looked at, you know, doing some carpet in here with this flexible seating, but again, the, the idea of maintenance, trying to wash. Or scrub these floors and then having carpet right there was not ideal, so we went through just a different pattern of LVT in here. And then flexible seating that goes in there. Similar for these, LVT in the corridor, flex base, carpet in the classrooms. Surrounding tile in the bathrooms. Here I have a fire suppression plan, so a sprinkler plan that goes here. What we show, so pretty much all of these existing spaces, with the exception of a few of them that already have. New fire suppression in here, so the fire suppression contractor is responsible for. We say you have to remove it all, whether they can salvage it or not is up to them. Some of these spaces, it is likely salvageable, but by the time we put new duct, hydronic. New electrical runs, whatever, a lot of that will have to come out, but it's, it's up to their discretion to reuse what they want. A lot of this new stuff up here is plastic pipe, so there's really not a lot of salvageable pieces of that. But it'll be up to them, so contractors will come. We also, I, I should have said this too, our, we do have two pre-bid meetings, they're on the same day for both projects, but they're on the third of August. That's when contractors will come to each of these spaces and they get an opportunity to look in at each of the buildings, so they'll come. We'll go spend half a day poking our head up above ceilings as they want to, so we'll. That's at one o'clock at the high school and then at three o'clock at the elementary school, so this one should be pretty quick, elementary school, we could be there for quite some time. Here is just an overall plumbing plan. Showing plumbing to the spaces. And again, it, the way we have our phase, it lays out quite nice with where the building stops are, so. Shouldn't have a whole lot of disturbance, I shouldn't say that, who knows what we'll come up with, but. As far as disturbance goes, when the school is in session, we should have a pretty approachable approach. Big scope of the work, which is close to probably four million dollars is the HMAC portion of the project, so. Showing all new ventilation, hydraulic lines to all of the spaces, so. This is really where the, the project is, is above the ceiling, so. A lot of stuff that we don't get to see when the project is all done, but hopefully everyone feel it. Site electrical plan, so just showing some new lights out here with some security cameras on them, new lighting out at this bus loop. And then new lights over at the small parking lot over here. Lighting plan, this is each of the spaces, just showing all the lights. You'll see in some of these, like the cafeteria space and the flex learning spaces, they have some linear LED lights. Some nice aesthetic pieces to some of those larger aggregating areas. Two by two lights in each classroom, one here lights in flex spaces. Last drawing is our food service drawing. I'm just showing all the kitchen equipment with the layout, what this is showing here is, as part of, as part of our bid strategy. This is an alternate, so it'll be a price we can either accept or not accept, similar to how the roofs go, so if we want to. Which we do want to, take this as an alternate, we can accept it. Reason we did that is it's about forty-five thousand dollars and at that time, the kitchen equipment had. Grown quite a bit larger than what we had had budgeted for, so as a way to combat that, we did this as an alternate. We still do carry that in our budget, this is one of the few alternates that's carried in the budget as a line item, so I do have a plan to accept that. But we do have the option with bids coming in that we, if they weren't favorably, that's what we would plan to procure in the future. So the alternates we do have for the projects, again, those are, those are numbers that we'll get separately, that we can either accept or deny. If we, if, if we like the price, but they are not, it doesn't quite fit within our budget yet, we can ask the contractor to hold that price. Can't guarantee anything on it, but my thought is as we get further along as contingency, if it's available, we can start allocating some of those contingency dollars to those things. The alternates that we have, alternate one is the kitchen, the serving line in the kitchen, alternate two is. Two is the roofs, so there's actually five, it's two A, B, C, D and E for the different roofs. Three is the fire alarm, so we, we bid that out as an alternate, so we get competitive pricing on that, if there's an existing system in the building. Which we'd like to use, but we offer alternates to keep prices competitive. Four are the controls for the building, so alternate four, so three and four, we do have to accept, but it's, just gives us options of what manufacturer we accept. So four A and B are controls contractors, and then five are the acoustical panels in the gym. So that was just another one, that's about twenty thousand dollars, it's not a huge alternate, but it was one of those easy ones that we could say. It's a want, but it's not a need, and it's one of those things we could add in very easily later on, so have five alternates on the front end.
So this plan hasn't changed since April?
Not drastically, I mean, there's a few tweaks, had to add, add a bathroom that the code official wanted, or the planet reviewer wanted us to add. But other than that, as far as layout goes or anything like that, no, not really, not since DD. You know, finishes, changed some finishes in there.
Any other question? Okay, so then I think what we are looking for is a motion to approve going to bid tomorrow, correct? With reviewing there, with the deadline of the 11th for the high school.
Motion to approve, motion to approve construction documents and motion to go to bid, correct?
Correct.
So you want two separate motions?
I think you do, one.
I can, yeah, you can do one.
So motion to approve construction documents and to approve going to bid starting tomorrow. With the deadline, the 11th for the high school and the 18th for the elementary. Motion by Dave, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Marv? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Oh, I have one note, so just if anybody does have contractors that are looking to bid on it. You can get them either in touch with Dr. Godfrey, who can get them in touch with myself, otherwise, we send out. Send out about five hundred bid requests to contractors that we know are in the area. They also go out to all the bidders exchanges, so there's six or so within the state that we send them out to, so. Contractors, they go online to these bid exchanges and they, they look for projects that are there, it'll show up there. Also, it'll get advertised in the Detroit Lakes newspaper, so. That's where everybody can find it, like I said, if there's somebody that's looking to, make sure they get ahold of us. Thank you.
Thanks, Colin.
Moving on to eight point two frontline education time clock program.
So our current time clock program is going to be obsolete, we go through region one for that, they're no longer carrying that, they do have a different product. We've been using frontline for a variety of different things, such as our subfinder program. This integrates with that, I had Shawna look it over, see if it would meet the specifications she needed, and she said it works very well. So with what we have in place, this will be our next addition to our digital format for HR.
So the, looking for a motion to approve eleven thousand hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty cents for implementation in two years. So, motion by Marge, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Marv, is there a discussion?
Does this compare to the price of the previous one?
It's a little bit more, but it's, a lot of it has to do with that initial startup piece.
How does it work, it's their time clock, right?
It's a time clock, so when they go in the subfinder system. And they put in for an absence, that absence integrates into the time clock system, so we don't have four or five different systems all integrated now.
The, the big selling point of this is that it'll manage both positive and negative times, so not only. The punches in and out, but also the request for time off. And so it'll, it'll track absences a lot easier for me as well, right now, I probably spend. Or at least one day every two weeks going through everybody's time clock and figuring out who forgot to punch in and that kind of thing, and this one will automatically notify users.
So where do they do that at, like, physical?
It'll be a web-based, so.
Which right now, we just have a Chromebook in the lounge, and it just will hold up, so they just, it'll be the same thing, it's a different.
Different.
But it's something that'll have to be in the building, I'm assuming?
Um, that I don't know, I can't check on that.
Well, if they put in for an absence, they can do that.
Yep.
Right, but I'm talking, if they punch in and out, it's my question, that they have to be in the building to make that.
I don't.
They, they don't necessarily have to do that.
So I know that was a selling point in time clock, but it never actually was turned on. At least since I've been here, so.
My only concern is, I mean. Is if people are time blocking in or out.
At home.
Yeah.
Well, we've, we actually had those issues with time clock and between administration, when we tracked it, we were able to track that.
Well, you were, yeah, same, you get this great deal.
We also do have.
The cameras help, because you can just say, get left at this time and you, yeah.
Right, so sometimes there's going to have to be a human involvement.
Oh, what's nice now is like, and it might not be on purpose, like Shawna says, every two weeks, she'll be like, Barb, Craig put in for a sub. I never took a day off, which, you know, usually is like, not busy, people aren't good enough, perfect, but.
Or you're sick and you're coming back.
This will make you have to put in a sick day before you get a sub.
And it has to be improved.
So then, I would guess there's a couple that have slipped through the, who knows, not sure it's cracked, but, you know, so this way to alleviate that.
Yep, and also we do have a number of people that work from home, so. Them not being able to clock in and out at home is hard, yeah.
Oh, it's a, it's a, it's a hard thing to release, it's contracted everybody where they're.
I mean, I did negotiate the prices down quite a bit, saying we couldn't afford their package, so I. I think this is, this is good pricing, I think this is going to save a lot of time in business office too, so.
And short of the setup, it's about a wash then, compared to the old system.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and a nice thing is this company frontline offers lots of, I would call them plugins. That are all integrated under that company, so as we get further into digitizing a lot of our things, we'll just add through them, so it'll all be seamless across.
The other thing is we already decided on the subfinder, so have we, if we don't add this part on to it, people are going to be having to. To one spot for subs and another spot for clocking in and time off requests and that, this, I think this will improve. People's responses a lot.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries, eight point three security cameras for buses.
We currently don't have any security cameras on our buses and most of the time. That's an installation you get when you buy a new bus, and that's becoming a pretty mainstay practice. Few reasons, vandalism on the buses, safety on the buses, things happening in the back of the buses where the bus driver can't necessarily. Watch, these also have DVRs that come with them, so it's a recording camera. We had one of our buses just dramatically vandalized this last year, the bus driver wasn't able to see it happening, because of course he's driving, his focus is on that. The nice thing about this, with this entire quote, thirty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars, we actually have Essar three funds to cover the entire cost of it. So it's two things, vandalism, but also a good safety measure for the buses.
Can we cover our two spare buses we're talking about?
Not yet, but we'll, like I said, these are, these are a pretty. Mainstay in buses, especially buses in North Dakota, so when we purchase those buses, hopefully they have cameras already on them. That's something we can add to later.
Okay, we have a motion to use Essar funding to, for thirty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty cents for installing security cameras in the buses.
So.
Motion by Marv, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave, is there any further discussion?
What about the older buses, you know, the ones that'll have to retire in a couple of years, do we really need to put a camera?
I would say yes, the one bus that was vandalized this year, I bet it cost thousands of dollars with the damage that it suffered at bus. That could have been solved by, first of all, camera, well, we don't know who's responsible for it. And it's an older bus, so even though we're going to retire him out, we can switch all that, we get a new bus and we can switch all that technology over to the new bus too.
Carried over.
Yeah.
Plus, I kind of feel like if you had it in some and not in others and something happened in the one you didn't have.
That could create. You take bus four to basketball.
Yeah, there's some issues, I think, that's just my opinion.
Plus, I, a lot of the reason we put cameras in buses is for security. There have been. Cases of sexual harassment caused on buses, vandalism, losing illegal substances.
Had a parent come on.
Had a parent, had a parent come on the bus, we had no way, you know, no way to document that. These are ways that, for instance, one of my buses, there was a date found on the bus, we didn't know who it belonged to, just looked at the camera and. Found out, I mean, it's just, it's a good safety measure. I know a big school in North Dakota, there was sexual harassment suit filed against the, the district because of an incident that caused, was occurred on the bus. They pulled the cameras footage and they showed what happened, so they were able to substantiate what happened to us.
I think plus, we did it at Ada Warped and bus drivers really, because like you said, they're on, eyes are on the road the whole time, but if the kids know that, we can go back and check cameras. It kind of helped empower them to be able to say, if you're messing around, even if I'm not watching.
It also protects our bus drivers, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries, eight point five, eight point four purchased used buses.
This is part of our transportation discussion, we currently don't have working spares. The plan was to purchase two spares that are in good condition with the appropriate engine in them. Hopefully in pre-two thousand six, I actually found out it's pre-two thousand eight for school buses. We did have a company that reached out, we've been working with, they had twelve coming into inventory with less than a hundred and thirty thousand miles on them. Cummins engines, pre, uh, pre-def. They all got sold at one time before they brought them into inventory. So they're working on something for us. So right now, at this time, I guess the only action would be to purchase buses if we want to put parameters or if we want to, the only problem is we have to be able to purchase, obviously, when they're available or are they gonna go. Um, that same bus company is working on another possibility for us, but they're going, they're going just as quick as the buses.
So the dollar amounts that those buses have been at were around thirty thousand each, right?
Around thirty thousand, and the transportation committee settled on that amount, thirty thousand, I, I think they thought was reasonable. Um, looking at the mileage of that or below, you know, a hundred and thirty, hundred, hundred thousand mark, a hundred and thirty for a pre-def engine, would you agree? Mark, it would probably be similar?
Yeah, and I think we were talking significantly less money for that bus.
Yes, we were. So the ones we were looking at were around twelve, thirteen thousand. That bus is rusted, falling apart. Buses coming in, it would have been thirteen thousand dollars. Much better condition, like I said, they just got sold. So I think that's in the parameters we'd be looking at. Rust, chassis, engine mileage, the pre-def model. And then going that, that price range.
So would the board like to set a parameter, or how do we want to handle this, given the nature that they're going quickly when they are available?
I think that probably the easiest, most effective way would be to let the transportation committee set those parameters. I can work with them if we get anything. My guess is something comes in, we're probably gonna have to make a decision within twenty-four hours. So I can notify transportation committee, you give them the authority to okay that.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, the board should kind of have some kind of ballpark, where we think it's about seventy thousand.
Uh, for the two? I would say no more than that for two.
Right.
Yeah.
Total.
Yes, total.
Yep. I make a motion, superintendent, we're the transportation committee, make that decision so they can move quickly if need be.
Do you want to put a dollar on it, or no?
Seventy thousand for the two. If it's anywhere above that, they'll have to use a judgment call. But that should be our target, I would think, if you were to take a look at it, you think that's a good ballpark.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Marv, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Eight point five bus lease.
Okay, interesting thing.
Bus lease?
Bus lease. So our, our current bus lease with North Central, um, after we sent the agreement, submitted that for the lease agreement, they told us that Bluebird now tacked a, we were six thousand something, extra expense onto it because of the cost of getting buses, custom materials, everything. So that jacked our cost up by about another, almost thirteen thousand dollars. So I contacted our attorneys and said, what ramifications are there? What recourse do we have? They said, well, you can go to court, but that's gonna cost more than that dollar amount anyways, and then you'll still pay all two buses. So during the transportation committee, I was tasked with finding out if we can get out of that lease. I did contact the lease company, they said the lease isn't, the agreement has not been completed yet, so we can't. So this company we were looking at with used buses, Harlow's, the Bismarke, North Dakota, I started talking with them about the, the spare buses. They said, well, we do have a lease process too. Um, so if you look, that's what is on there now. And it's probably comparative, maybe a bit better than what we were quoted. There's no surcharge tacked on that. Another thing, the North Central said, when our transportation director first approached them, they said they had fifty buses on the lot they could deliver before school started, then they told them they can't deliver till February. Harlow said they can deliver by January, if not sooner, because their buses are already on order and they have a date when they're shipped. So with this, we're actually saving money. So I'll let you kind of know the two options here. The first one is, it'll be two buses for a three-year term. The total amount is up top, one thirteen, which is about the same. At the end of that lease, we have the option to purchase those buses for forty thousand dollars each. The second is same amount, same terms. Payments are a little bit more. At the end of those payments, one dollar buys us out of the lease. So remember, when we first discussed this, our goal was to have a lease period of three years to see how it went financially and effectively for the transportation of our students. If it did meet our needs, we're gonna continue with overlapping lease, so we continue to have new buses every three years. This will give us that same option. And there's no surcharge tacked, attached, we know exactly when we get the buses. I personally think this is a better deal. And again, we're not obligated to the other deal as it stands now.
The dollar amounts are similar.
Yeah, pretty much exactly the same.
Is this for four years though, instead of three years?
Nope, this is a three-year term.
Oh, I see, the second one is a, the fourth payment would be a full payment, not the dollar, right?
Nope, the, the last one, yeah, the fourth payment would be the full payment to come out to that hundred and thirteen thousand and then a buyout of the lease, the dollars that means we return it.
And the top one has an extra payment of forty thousand.
Yeah, which is, which is actually a purchase of the bus.
Um, do we have a motion to approve?
Uh, which, which option do we?
I would look at the second, the second option. Um, I think that by, we're gonna continue with leasing buses, then I think at the end of those leases, it'd be nice to be able to turn those and get brand new buses with also keeping the, our spares on hand and operational.
It's consistent, four payments and the same things, it's easier to budget versus a forty thousand, extra ten, thirteen, or thirteen thousand one year.
Really, it's only five thousand more than what we already had budgeted, it's not terrible.
And again, to reflect on leasing, the thing it takes out of our hands is that maintenance. We're gonna have to do preventive maintenance and the regular oil changes and tires, but any major engine repairs, we don't need to worry about it, so we're gonna warranty it all the time.
If we do this, we'd still have to have the two used buses for spares.
Yes.
Yeah, we would hurt and even start the year, really.
Yeah, that's the fear. We only have nine working buses and it looks like we're gonna only have the nine routes. We have no spares. We have a bus that broke down. The estimate to, I've heard two estimates to replace the engine, because the engine is totally gone. One's thirty thousand, one's forty thousand dollars. The bus on the market right now is probably worth five thousand dollars.
Okay, so the recommendation is to approve four payments at thirty thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents? And this is, it would be times two, right, for two buses?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Marv, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Marv, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Eight point six activity fees.
I was chatting with Sherry recently about activities fees. They haven't been increased in quite a while. She looked, did a comparison with other districts. And we're below most other districts in our region, some far below, on what we charge for activities fees. So this is a slight increase. Those funds will go back into activities, so they'd be able to support purchasing equipment, uniforms, so forth, like currently using now. So basically asking for a slight increase to activities fees and the max amounts for families.
What are they due?
Um, so currently, I wanna say junior high sports is, on here we have forty-five. I think it's currently forty, so five dollars. Rela- relatively five dollars across the board increase.
So it's the same, uh, ninety dollars max per sport, or is it?
Ninety dollars max. So if you have a student that wants to do three sports, they're only gonna pay the ninety instead of forty-five for each.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So.
Motion by Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave, discussion?
Yes, should we add, uh, sports or?
Add the esports?
Yeah.
Is that, um, we can add that esports, and I think we had, um.
We had a fee set up right here.
Yeah, we had actually already approved that. So we haven't increased that fee, because we actually haven't started it yet. We already have a fee set up for esports though.
And these, there is a discount for any students on free introduced launch, correct?
Yes, that's free introduced launch.
So this is just.
And then we kept speech, robotics, knowledgeable, no fee, because that's more of a co-curricular academic style. Um, and usually happens during school day.
And if any student can't pay, there are student activities, activity money that we will, or student assistant fees, sorry, that we can pull from, so everyone gets a chance.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Eight point seven first read policies, so there's two policies that were included in your board pocket.
The one we talked about, purchasing authority thresholds, if you have the opportunity to look at that, these are, gonna be a little different to share, so if you could give me a second. All right, let me read through at least. So basically, thresholds are for purchase cards, that's, we had approved that, which gives superintendent authority to implement the system. And of course, that was teachers, so we had approved that a while ago. The purchases of twenty-five hundred and below, they can be delegated by the superintendent to school administration. Other principals will have that authority. Basically, what they do is confer with me, then through our request system, they have the authority to use that. Uh, between twenty-five hundred to nine 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 nine, they have the ability to do that. I require them to get their, seek bids, three bids, uh, proposals. And if it's not practical, then they have to have it in writing why. So in other words, there might be a time constraint to it, or there might be only one vendor that provides the service, like for instance, ripple training. We only have one vendor in our area that does ripple training. So on that instance, that wouldn't be a requirement. Then a purchase of ten thousand, fifteen thousand would be only allowed by, to be made by me. Also go through the bidding process with three vendors, unless it's impractical again, if there's only one vendor in the area or if it's a emergency situation. Um, and this is pretty standard. Then at the bottom is state law that talks about contracting the law. So in actuality, we don't have to go to bid for purchases unless they're over a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, a hundred and seventy-five thousand is what's called a proposal threshold. So you're required to seek two proposals after that, over that, it's bidding. So this is kind of keeping it with, what is typical, I should put those in S P D S though. Exit interview policy. Basically, what it's going to do for us is just put it in policy that will conduct exit interviews. And as Marv was saying, the reason behind that is we want to see if people are leaving or we have a large number of staff looking at one time. We kind of get a, uh, idea. And open-ended questions can be recorded back to board, so we give you kind of an understanding. And we can change practices here if we find that that's part of the reason why we have more staff leaving. So these are both for, both for first read, so they'll be a first read, then they'll be on again next board meeting for that second read, which will be the final.
So we don't have to make a motion or anything like that, right?
Have to make a motion to approve the first read of the hall system.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the first read of those two policies? Purchasing authority thresholds and exit interview policy.
So.
Motion by Mark, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Now, succeeding meetings nine to one, regular monthly school board meeting is August twenty-second at six thirty P M. And then the very next night, we have our board retreat, August twenty-third at five P M, at a location to be determined.
And I understand that that means we won't have our regular work session this month, because we'll cover, we'll cover what we have to cover in those two weeks. So August eighth, we won't have a work session.
Anything else for the good of the order? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So. I'd be.
Dave was first, Marv was second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The school, just to make sure, school board means the twenty-second, not the twenty?
Fourth, fourth Monday.